Do you call out to see if Councillor Megan McMath is in this meeting? Councillor McMath? I don't see her as active at this time.
I haven't seen her join yet, Your Worship, but she did accept the meeting request earlier.
Okay, so we'll just keep, um, just a look out, but at this time, Councillor McMath is not yet in the meeting. So just a note for the minutes, um, we'll make note of, of her arrival, should she be able to join. But since we do have quorum from this evening at seven o'clock, so we will proceed. So good evening, everyone, and welcome to our virtual committee of the whole meeting for Monday, April the 19th. We're just at seven o'clock. Um, now officially calling this meeting to order. And I do wish to begin by acknowledging that we are meeting virtually from the territories of the Sauk and Chanu nations. Our first order of business this evening is item three, which is ministerial order M192. And that is that the committee of the whole is holding this meeting without meeting members of the public in attendance under ministerial order M192, as council chambers cannot safely accommodate the unknown number of public participants wishing to attend. And that the committee of the whole is committed to ensuring openness, transparency, accessibility and accountability through the submission of written comments and the provision of live and recorded broadcasts of the meeting. Uh, we are in committee of the whole, so only one mover is required for every motion this, uh, tonight. So I see that Councillor St Pierre is moving this motion. Uh, we're quite familiar with this. I will add though, since we are virtually on MS teams, I will be calling out, um, to our, our, our committee staff just to invite members of the public to speak, uh, as you have registered. Okay. So I'll call the question on item three. All those in favor, please. And that's unanimous. Thank you. First up is item, or sorry, next up is item four, approval of tonight's agenda. So that would be that the agenda for April 19th, 2021, committee of the whole meeting be adopted as circulated. I don't see any new business or any changes. So move it option by Councillor La Genes. Okay, uh, any comment? No, I'll call the question then. All in favor, please. And none opposed. I don't see Councillor La Genes present, but we have quorum. We're still good. Okay. So there you are. Thank you. Uh, item five is our delegations. We have two delegations registered for tonight. So I'm going to start off with the first one, 5.1, which is homelessness in the Sauk region by the Sauk Community Health Network. And our presentation is by Gemma Martin. So I'll just confirm with staff. Do we have Ms. Martin present on teams and able to present?
Yes, we do. And I believe that our chief administrative officer is also going to speak to this item.
Okay. So welcome and thank you for joining with us and I'll turn this over to you. And I believe we have five minutes, uh, set aside for each delegation tonight per our council procedures. Um, Mr. McKinnis, did you have a comment first off?
No, I just wanted to thank Gemma for, uh, showing up tonight. We had a little bit of a communication issue. So, uh, she's probably not as prepared as, uh, she had hoped to be, but I'm really grateful that she's here and, uh, able to share this information with council this evening. So, uh, Your Worship, we can send it over to Gemma.
Perfect. Thank you. I realized I was on mute. So thank you very much.
Hi guys, can you hear me? Exit. Sorry, I was having headphone problems. Thanks for that, Norm. Um, I will, um, so basically for those of you that don't know me, my name's Gemma.
Sorry, Ms. Martin, we can really hear your chair rolling.
I can hear, uh, feedback.
You have that?
Is that, can I drop in and drop out and see if it corrects it?
Is, is Mary muted? It could be feedback coming from her.
Ms. Dunn, are you muted?
I'm, I'm trying to mute and it's not doing it there.
I, I muted you. Um, sorry, Ms. Martin, do you have a phone or anything? Have you joined separately with a phone? Okay, well, we'll give that a try.
Is that enough better? Let me go out and come back.
Okay. So just as we get this corrected, um, okay, we'll just wait a minute, actually. I was going to suggest that we could go to the second one. Uh, but we do have, it is a, a committee coming forward. So maybe she's, she's right back now.
Hello?
Hello? Welcome back.
Oh my gosh, this is awful.
That's totally clear now. Um, we can't see you, but we can hear you.
Okay, I can't hear you guys at all.
Uh-oh. Ms. Machada, is, um, Ms. Martin still in the meeting or did she exit again? Oh, here we go. Welcome back. We can see you now.
I can hear you now. Is that better?
Yes, it is. Thank you so much.
No worries. Apologies about that. I don't know quite what was going on there, technology in the COVID age. Um, so I was just saying, for those of you who don't know who I am, my name's Gemma Martin. And, um, I've been working, um, as a contractor with Sauk, um, Region Communities Health Network for the last sort of nine months. Um, and I came in on a CRD funded initiative, a community capacity building initiative, to have a little look at the homelessness in the Sauk region. Um, and collected, like, the main aim was to kind of bring together a bit of a report and to show, um, what the current situation is in Sauk in terms of homelessness to support the homelessness coalition. And sort of developing that a little bit, putting together some terms of reference. And my contract's actually just finished in the sense that I've left with putting in place a strategic plan based on the work that, um, I say I've done, but collectively I've sort of dropped into quite a few people. And, um, so I'd say it's kind of a collaborative process of work that's been put together. Um, all I was planning to, like, as mine's just said, I've got five sort of minutes to talk through this. We'll get through it as quickly as possible, but we put out, um, basically an 80-page report. Um, you may have seen it on social media or going around the last few, um, weeks in some of the, um, various communities and, and boards that are going on. But basically what, what I did in the end, I put together a report about Sauk, about the homelessness. And the idea is that, um, it raises the awareness of what's going on here. I know that Sauk Communities Health Network do a lot and Sauk Shelter Society. And everything is done on a very much a nonprofit basis. So there's a lot of grant writing, a lot of trying to get funding for the area to support kind of programs. And I do, the, the, the reason, one of the biggest reasons for this report is to show actually we need the money and we can now evidence how and why we could use that money in this area to build capacity here to support what's going on locally in Sauk. Um, so hopefully you've all seen the report in some capacity, but if I just talk briefly about the process that I went through. Um, so I kind of tried to pitch a little bit of a, a small lit review in the report and have a look at what rural homelessness is compared to, um, sort of urban homelessness and where most of the research is generally focused in Canada. Um, Sauk being sort of a rural community, although how long that'll last for with the influx of development here, I don't know. Um, and then, um, one of my big things I wanted to do was look at the need here. But not just kind of the need chronically, um, also did some sort of quite new stuff in the area and looking at the hidden homelessness population and the need here. Um, and what I mean by hidden homelessness is people who are couch surfing, people who are, um, on the edge of homelessness, people who are maybe one paycheck away from losing their accommodation, um, that sort of side of it. And this is quite a hard to reach community because there's kind of a shame associated with it. There's a, um, how do we find out who these people are? Um, so with that sort of, um, side of it, what I did was I put together a short survey. I went to places like the food bank, um, kind of tried to speak to a few people and get an understanding of what's going on with the hidden homeless population. Um, and through that work, we got, um, I think it was 70 plus people? No, 46 people, sorry, who engaged with that for us, um, who are basically saying, we have needs. We are kind of on the edge of homelessness. We know there are services there, but we maybe don't necessarily access them because of reasons of stigma, um, being one reason. There was quite a few other reasons in there. So there's a little bit of information about that, that side of the homelessness in Sauk. There's also a lot of information in there about the chronic homelessness in Sauk. And I think COVID has brought a lot of that to the forefront at the moment and the fact that there was the shelter at Sea Park. Um, and there was underlying feeling in Sauk that homelessness wasn't really a problem here. And then sort of COVID has brought everything to the forefront, to people's conversations, to people, to the general public raising awareness about it. So there's a bit of a rise up in there as well about COVID, about the temporary shelters, about statistics of who's staying in there. So there's a few sort of numbers and facts and figures about the community and the homelessness community here. But I think one of the powerful things in this report is I actually went out and did interviews with different cohorts of people. So the hidden homelessness population, we did some sort of conversations with, understanding kind of if they know where supports are, why they would or wouldn't access it. Um, conversations came back like these services aren't for me. Um, they're not, they're not geared towards the, the needs that I have. Um, they don't work around my work, um, setting. So actually they're open from, I don't know, nine till, till one, but I don't finish work till two, three, so I can't access those. So there's conversations like that in there. I did the interviews with people at the, the shelter, some, um, people who were really experiencing chronic levels of homelessness. What is needed, kind of the, it's all quite surface level that we've looked at. So we haven't really dug super deep at the moment. And then I did, um, an interview with somebody who's actually been homeless, homeless, sorry, in Sauk. And who has, um, actually kind of on the other side of it now, she's housed, she's actually housed in Vancouver and how well she's doing and what kind of helped to get to that step. So it's not just kind of facts and figures report. There's, um, lived and living experiences in there, which I think are quite powerful. Um, and like I said, five minutes, I'm not going to go through it all, but the, the thing that I pulled out of it, I did sort of put into place five, no, seven. Um, uh, seven basically recommendations, key recommendations, and they were for, I'm just, sorry, I'm out.
Yeah, we are at the five minutes. So I'll just ask council to pass, to consider passing a resolution to extend your time for a further five minutes, say. Uh, if someone is still willing, Councillor St Pierre has, okay? Um, I'll call the question, uh, okay, you're, you're just ahead of me. Or did you have a question, Councillor?
No, I did. Yeah. A point of order at a committee of the whole. Are there five-minute restrictions on delegations?
That is my understanding.
Okay.
So we'll move the, so we'll go back to the motion that's on the floor. All those in favor, please. And that's unanimous. Thank you. So we'll put another five minutes on. Thank you, Ms. Martin. Sorry for the interruption.
I will shoot through progress as quickly as possible. Right. So seven key recommendations. Some of them are already going ahead and the Sauk Coalition, I have to say, and Searchen and, um, Sauk Shelter Society are doing really well with stuff that, you know, you're, you're already aware of with the Hope Centre and things like that that are going on at the moment. But key recommendations, housing with wraparound supports was important in the area, transitional housing. So, um, uh, sorry, alongside that transitional housing, so rather than suggesting people in the shelter, we should be then going, here's a house. We should support people in a transitional process, um, through this, um, the hub service model. The Hope Centre hopefully will be, we'll be bringing a hub service model. The other thing this report has is limitations. So one of the things I've recommended is that we need meaningful alliances with the First Nations communities. Because Indigenous homelessness is very different. Um, so understanding kind of, um, you know, through the Indigenous world views, looking at kind of the different paths to homelessness and the, the trauma that's kind of led to the homelessness. Um, so that's kind of a different area that, I will say this report doesn't, doesn't account for. Um, education and communication, I've put down as a key recommendation, um, kind of within services, but also to the community as well. Support and education with the community. Um, affordable housing, I know that's a huge bread and contention in Sauk at the moment. Um, but affordable housing, I think there's things in there, you could look at like Sauk bylaws, you know, the whole idea that you can't, um, rent suites in duplexes, et cetera. Um, and then number seven, I've put as investment in localized services. These have been now sort of moved into a strategic plan, which Sauk Coalition are working with. Um, and they're meeting and they've got working groups working around all this. Um, but knowing that I'm very time restricted here, I was going to leave a little bit of an option if anyone's got any questions or anything they want to speak into me about this. And please do have a look at the report and I'm available for emails, conversations. If anybody does have any questions about, about the report going forward or how I can help you and your services.
Thank you very much, Ms. Martin, and thank you for providing the report in advance because then it gives something all for council to review and, uh, as part of preparation for tonight's meeting. So I see that, I think it was Councillor Beddows, um, has a question. Go ahead, please, Councillor.
Yeah, more, more of an observation. That was a wonderful report. I, I read it with great interest on the weekend and it was very comprehensive, covered a lot of ground and, uh, it, uh, certainly hit home. Uh, I guess it even was, there was one little saying in there I just wanted to, to bring out about, uh, you know, somebody that's homeless and you, you can't plan for a future when you're just planning how you're going to have a shower or where you're going to sleep that night. And I thought that was very compelling that, uh, and I remember down at Sea Park, when you were all working down there, that you were able to help some people get their lives back together and they just needed a helping hand to get on with it. Now, I know not all of the homeless are in that category, but I just wanted to say, I really did appreciate your report and I very much appreciated what you've been doing in the last seven to nine months. Thank you.
Well said, Councillor, or pardon me, Councillor Beddows. Thank you. Over to Councillor St Pierre, please.
Thank you. Uh, I was curious about, um, what the report, I did look at the report and I'm curious about specific graphic, how district, uh, what you want from the district. Is it advocacy? Uh, you mentioned bylaws at a certain point, but, uh, I, I wasn't able to pull from the report the specific areas where the district could be helpful. And that would be really useful, I think. Uh, the other thing that I did note in the report was that, and I have a little bit of experience in this, is that they didn't go far into talking about long-term supports and reaching out to people that have actually been, uh, you know, in the system, but then, for example, have maybe, uh, received, uh, you know, uh, rehabilitation treatments on and so forth, which is, takes a lot of time, takes a lot of money. But then if there's no supports afterwards, if there's no continued contact, people can often just end up in a vicious cycle of just going, falling right back into the same sort of problems. And often, uh, maintaining contact is very important. So I didn't actually see that part, but maybe I just missed it and I was curious as to whether or not that had been looked at.
No, I think that's a really good point. Um, and I think I have to acknowledge the report itself has its limitations. It's scoping report. It hasn't gone well within the, um, sort of mega deep. It is out there as a scoping level of report, what's going on in the area and what are we looking at kind of. And it is very much in the immediate. You are right in that sense. Um, we've been doing the work with Sauk Coalition to say, actually, if, if nothing's done now, if this report stays there, then it's kind of been a bit of a waste of time. The report's there to set up the next step. So your suggestion of actually looking at long-term supports could be the next recommendation that we gave. Right. We need to look at this now. This hasn't been picked up in this report. And that's something that maybe is the next level we need to look at here in Sauk and, and how things are done. So you know, you are right. That isn't, that isn't featuring in the report. So I appreciate that feedback. In terms of how the district can help, I think kind of collaboration and partnership with, um, Sauk Coalition, with Sauk, um, Shelter Society. I think that's going to be taken on now by the team and they can kind of recommend to you how that, how you might be able to help. For me, this is a case of letting you know about the information, letting you know it's out there and kind of updating you on what is going on in terms of homelessness in the region. Um, I'm hoping, honestly, on the back of the feedback and the work we've been doing, I'm hoping there's going to be continued relationships and, um, and sort of links in with the districts of Sauk and, and sort of, you know, some change one way or another. I don't know exactly how this works. Maybe, maybe Mary could speak in on that one, but yeah. So exactly how at the moment, I'm not sure, but it was more just a bit of a, an awareness conversation with you to say and letting you know the work that's been done and the work that continues. And at some point, there might be a further conversation with the district.
Thank you very much.
No problem.
Uh, Councillor Bateman, please. Thank you, Councillor St Pierre.
Yeah, um, yeah, thank you for the report. Very thorough. I'll agree with Councillor Beddows. It's a really substantial document. It covers, you know, as you say, the, um, the, the real world stories, the, uh, survey of existing community services and the backstory on the last year with the, with the shelters. Um, yeah, I was interested in your recommendations. I, I like that there's such a positive tone as well to the report in identifying what is in fact, corners seem to have been turned, particularly with the, the Hope Centre being a model of housing first, wraparound supports. So I, I know you didn't, that, that development happened after your report, but it takes off a few of the boxes in your recommendations, I believe. Is it in fact going to be the kind of hub services model? That, that'll be hosted out of the Hope Centre, I believe. I might ask that of Mary.
I was going to say, I, I believe that's sort of is what's happening, but Mary might want to speak in a bit more of this because I know there's a lot more work going on with that as, as we speak.
Sure. Thank you, um, Councillor Bateman. Um, yeah, we, we really just wanted to come to the meeting to introduce the report. It wasn't specifically to have any asks of the council, but to make them aware of what's going on. Um, when we got the funding for this report, the hope was that it would lead us to that funding to have, to provide the hub services. Um, and in fact, we weren't successful in getting, in getting that funding. It was put in for Sauk Shelter Society. The funding went to an organization in town that's going to provide, um, it to the greater district rather than just to Sauk. The intention with the Hope Centre, which is now being, um, the shelter is now being, um, um, the operational manager is now Sauk Shelter Society instead of Searchen and will be in the, in the, um, Hope Centre as well. Uh, the intention is to provide those hub services. So we're continuing to work in collaboration with the other agencies as we have been in the shelter to provide those services in the Hope Centre and are continuing, Sauk Shelter Society is continuing to seek funding to be able to expand those, um, hub services to that population. So following the recommendations that Gemma was able to provide will hopefully lead to being able to get more funding to support people in the Hope Centre.
Okay. And of course, in terms of the role the district can play, we, we are going to be the fiscal host for the grant application that went through on Friday.
Correct.
To the Connecting Communities Fund. Um, also I noted in the report, there was a call for investment in localized services. And I think the district could play a part, partial role. There was a mention of the new home for the Sauk Food Bank, fuller investment in the Sauk Family Resource Society, ongoing support as we currently do for Searchen and the Food Bank. And local mental health and substance use services like AVI, which can only give us one, one day a week here in Sauk. So those are some things, I suppose, that, that we should be looking at. Would you agree, Gemma?
Absolutely. I would definitely. And the investment, obviously, from within, from within the district, but also further investments using the, the grant applications, which I know that these guys are looking into so much at the moment. But the frustrating thing with the nonprofit is always the next grant application and that's kind of the world we live in. So if we have a bit more security with funding, that, that's, that's a dream world, but one that we should always strive into, in my opinion.
Yay. So my final question is a bit of a dystopian world, but you've noted that statistics Canada claims that over 50% of Canadians are paycheck to paycheck. So I'm wondering whether you anticipate, uh, the system being entirely overwhelmed one day, should there be a downturn?
It's, it depends. See, I, I think you have to change the lens a little bit and quite often we're looking at prevention. We're looking at prevention, uh, let's prevent people from getting homeless. Whereas if you flip, flip the narrative and start looking at wellbeing and, uh, and then, and then actually you're kind of supporting people with wellbeing, the, the like ability to kind of, the jobs, the security, so forth. It's, it's, the dystopian view is that no, actually, the whole thing we're striving to right now is a region without homelessness and without the risk of homelessness. But again, that's kind of, that is brutally honest, that is a dystopian view. We've got a lot of work before we're in that place. And again, one of the, the works that we, we're always looking at, like, with, I feel like we're always chasing our tails. And that's what I mean by prevention. We're always looking at, well, how do we stop these people from getting homeless? Well, it's actually, how do we keep these people home? It's a different, I know it sounds like the same thing, but it's not. It's a different narrative. Let's look at the wellbeing rather than the prevention side of things.
Thank you.
Not a problem.
Thank you very much for your work. Yes.
Councillor La Genes, please.
Yeah, I just want to thank Gemma and Mary and Sherry and all the volunteers who are involved in this. I think it, it is a very good report. And it's the kind of groundwork that, that is necessary for us to identify the problem and, and the issues involved. And I, I can't help feeling that this is, this is not, most of the, the, the problems that lead to homelessness are not kind of generated at the municipal level. I think like we didn't, we never approved the use of opioids. And for example, but, but I think it's, it's up to other orders of government to step in and provide the funding needed to, to catch these people and take a really proactive approach. So that, to catch people before they end up in this, in these situations. And I think with the work that you've done, it, it gives us the ammunition that we need to go after other orders of government to, to get them to step up and provide the funding required to look after these folks. And I don't really have a question, just a comment really.
Okay. Thank you, Councillor. Uh, Councillor St Pierre, I think I saw your hand up again.
Uh, just as a follow-up to what Councillor Genes was saying, I think that what Sauk guys have, though in abundance, are people who are generally willing to help. And I think that the community education that you're talking about is really critical. Uh, so it'll be interesting to see what happens because there's going to be a lot of need in that particular direction, not just with homelessness, but with, uh, and we'll be talking about this later tonight, with mobilization and climate action. And when we look at the climate action and basically not leaving anyone behind, we're certainly looking at uh, the people that are living paycheck to paycheck and how do you actually move an entire society to where its wellness that we're looking at? And not avoiding a cataclysm, but actually moving towards a good place. So I think that's a, that's an important distinction to make and I'm, I'm glad you're making it here as well. And just as a, a small side note, I was involved in a program at one point that provided, uh, old cell phones that were recycled to people that were homeless and they were trying to access supports. And what was useful about that was that we actually, uh, paid for the, the, the text plans. And that was very valuable to the people who were using the phones, but it also allowed, uh, people who were working with them to keep in touch. I don't know if that's something that's been considered.
Okay. Were you looking for an answer, Councillor St Pierre, about the cellphone program? Ms. Martin, do you know if that's been considered or if you have anything happening there?
I can't tell you if that's being considered. Probably best to hand over to Mary again, if I'm brutally honest. Mary, it's a good idea though. It's a great initiative.
It, it is a great idea and it's not something we've, um, necessarily directly talked about. Um, however, at the beginning of COVID, the government, um, there was funding and some cell phones were purchased and were provided to people who were homeless, um, to be able to make those connections at the very beginning of COVID. It certainly didn't give everybody those connections, but it is a really good idea. And, and I think something that, um, I will bring forward to Sauk Shelter Society to consider.
I think it could be the case that because they've been having to muster up and deal with a temporary scenario that has more permanence around even the structure, uh, the staff and the volunteers there, they can start looking at the next, uh, you know, what can be done next, rather than worrying about where are we going to run this out of? Uh, is that was, you know, a real issue for so many months. Um, Councillor St Pierre, you had a comment or question?
Sorry about that. Uh, I just want to follow up. Uh, I should point out that the cell phones were actually donated. Uh, they were used and somewhat obsolete. And that was considered to be better because that, they, there was less concern about them being sold or lost or whatever. Uh, the, the real value was actually paying for the cell plans, which people often have trouble paying for. So, yeah.
Yeah. Understood. Thank, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Councillor St Pierre. Uh, thank you again, um, for joining with us and for the report, Ms. Martin and, uh, and Ms. Dunn. Um, certainly it's been, it, it just even through the region's health planning, there was sort of a phase of, okay, we'll do this and this and this. But because of the pandemic, everything changed and the emphasis became on the, supporting the temporary shelter, uh, the locations and so forth, while you had all this other work occurring in the background. But at the same time, it gave us very relevant and helpful information, uh, to use going forward. Um, just of note that since we do have our Sauk Coalition to end homelessness, uh, I have been, we've been working as Sauk Shelter Transitions that there would be a monthly working group meeting as well as the coalition meetings. And we've had some sort of start and stops, mainly. Mainly, it's been my fault because of the impact of just making the schedules work. And then also, we've been invited to participate on the Greater Victoria Coalition to End Homelessness Working Group, which is also monthly, so that Suk Shelter or the Suk Coalition would benefit by sharing information that's occurring directly out of Suk and also to hear what's happening around the region, so that there's some real coordination here. It's just unfortunately, that it's just, with my schedule, it's been a challenge. And I've worried that I am dropping things off my plate, not because I'm, I'm not interested, it's just because there's just so much happening. So I have reached out to councillor Bateman and have asked him to take this role on going forward. Councillor Bateman, I did that because councillor Bateman is also my CRD alternate. So often, he is needing to jump in and attend. We're, we're very accustomed to priming each other back and forth for matters that come up accordingly, so that we have just a seamless transition, no matter who is at the CRD in that case. For example, I do a lot of caregiver work for my father. On Sunday, he unfortunately fell and and hit his head quite severely. So just things like that, that up, that changed my life around. So what I thought we could do this evening, and we are in committee of the whole, is just make a recommendation that council appoint councillor Jeff Bateman as council liaison to the Suk Coalition to End Homelessness. So I'm going to put that motion forward. I'm hoping that in doing so, it also, just from council, just we're accepting the report, the work that you're doing. And I hope it just provides a bit of support that's stronger going forward. Ms Dunn, we're now, sorry, go ahead. We're in a committee in the whole, and this is a weird meeting, so go ahead.
Sorry, sorry, may I take? I was just wondering, because you co-chair that the homelessness coalition, would the, would the recommendation be for councillor Bateman to co-chair the coalition?
Yes. And I've asked councillor Bateman that any time you require me to be there in the capacity of mayor, I certainly would. And it's just so that, it'll just help because there's just, with some of the other affiliations that we have, I, I can't, I can't manage everything in the schedule. There's too many overlaps in scheduling, and I feel it would just be unfair to say, okay, you guys, you all need to reschedule because this has come up now. It is just a busy time for Covid. Councillor St Pierre, I see your hand, and then councillor Bateman?
Thank you. I was just wondering if this was a good time to designate an alternate if it was needed? Or would you be the alternate?
We could, we could do, I was thinking I would be more the alternate in this case, so, to councillor Bateman. But it just shifts, it just shifts it off my plate right now. And then my intent is to provide the continuity that the group needs to get off the ground. Councillor Bateman? Did you have your head up too?
Yeah, I did. And yeah, I'm, I'm very happy to, to, to step in here. A little daunted by the thought of co-chairing, but who is my co-chair? It's Sherry, is that right?
It would be Melanie Cunningham, so. And I do realise I'm springing this all on you at, tonight with no notice, but we are in committee of the whole. We do need to make a recommendation to council and so forth. It's just, I need to get the ball rolling. And it's the same with, with SIP and even with some other things. Everything's starting to overlap right now.
Okay, well.
Okay. So I'm going to go back to this here and just restate the motion then, that the committee of the whole recommend that council appoint councillor Jeff Bateman as council liaison to the Suk Coalition to End Homelessness. Okay, so I'm so moving that. Any discussion on the motion? None? Okay, I'll call the question then, all those in favour, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you very much, and thank you to the delegation for presenting with us tonight.
Just a moment, do we want to accept the report or not?
I guess we can. Yes, motion to receive the report for information by councillor St Pierre. Thank you for that. Anything further from anyone? Okay, I'll call the question then, all those in favour? And that's unanimous as well, thank you. Okay, thank you very much, Ms Martin and Ms Dunn. You're free to stay and enjoy the rest of the meeting or carry on with the rest of what you need to do tonight. I'll, I'll leave that with you to decide accordingly. Thank you. Okay, so our next item up is, our second delegation is five point two, Climate Action Committee Recommendations. So I'm just going to ask staff here, just because this is kind of new for us procedurally, where we do have a committee now, one of council committees, that's making recommendations forward. So I wasn't sure if that would actually fall more into the report type of section or not, but it's, it's here where it is, so that's fine. So is there anything first from our staff that we need to introduce this? Since it's coming from our district, our own district committee? Is there a staff intro or is it simply that it is the delegation that's presenting on behalf of the committee?
Through your worship, there is no staff delegation. They, normally, it would come forward from the council liaison. But there were a number of recommendations made from the committee, and I believe that the information that goes along with those is quite involved. So staff did recommend to the committee that we go for a committee of the whole delegation so that council could receive all of the information.
Okay, I understand. And then just in terms of timing, I always have the five minutes in my mind. It's five minutes, five minutes, five minutes for delegations. But committee of the whole, we are able to allow more time? Or is, you know, I'm just wanting to cognisant of the time for everyone involved in the work we need to do, but I don't want to be timing for five minutes if we do allow for a bit more flexibility?
We have typically in the past invited delegations that know they're going to require more than five minutes to share their information to come to a committee of the whole. So the appropriate motion would just be to allow them extra time. And I believe that we had committed, not committed, but suggested that they needed about fifteen minutes.
Okay, so at this time, I'll just sort of look, go. So I apologise to the former delegation for not allowing the same latitude, but we still had a good discussion. I think council was prepared anyway. Okay, so we'll go with fifteen minutes? And then if there's procedurally anything that's incorrect, I'm going to ask council for a point order of that. And I also seem to see that councillor McMath has joined the meeting. Councillor McMath, are you now present in this meeting?
I am.
Okay, so I'll just, we'll have you now as attending the meeting from sort of this point onwards. And just when we do get to decisions, I'll need you to turn your video on. It's just easier if I can see everyone together on the screen. Because right now, I'm not seeing you in the same screen as everyone else.
Yeah, my apologies for being late. I'm just getting off work. I'm driving right now, so I'm on speaker. So should I disagree with something, wish to speak, I'll, I'll pipe up. And once I'm back home, I'll be online on camera.
Okay, no, good to know that that's happening. So you just stay safe there and we won't worry about seeing you. But I will call out to you in case you have any questions of our delegation. Okay, thank you, council, for your patience with this procedural issues that I appear to be having. So at that note, I'll turn this over to our presenters this evening. And I would like to invite Ms Elizabeth Lang and Ms Russell to present, please, tonight on behalf of the Climate Action Committee. Thank you.
Great, thank you. I'm going to share my screen, if I may. This is Anna Russell. Can you see that?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, great. And I'll try to be as brief as I can. So thanks very much for letting us talk to you tonight. I am really excited to be here. I'm Anna Russell, I'm the lead of the data working group for the Climate Action Committee. And I'm here tonight with Elizabeth Lang, who's the lead for our education and engagement group. So this slide is just a reminder of our mandate that's on our Terms of Reference, which I'm sure you're familiar with since you gave it to us. And we're expected to contribute to a climate adaptation and mitigation strategy, as well as some other things, including recommendations for achieving carbon neutrality and developing an engagement plan. So I'm here tonight, reporting today on our initial planning for carbon neutrality, as well as measuring and monitoring emissions. And Elizabeth is here today, reporting on our initial planning for community engagement and education. So we're going to be asking you three things today. We're asking you to adopt an updated emissions reduction target for the district. And we're asking you to organise an opportunity for our data working group to meet with OCP leads to discuss emission reduction targets in the OCP. And finally, we'll be asking you for funding for a communications consultant who would help us develop a five-year engagement strategy leading towards our exciting fall launch this year. So we did want to acknowledge before we get started, the direction that Suk council has already provided around the climate emergency, starting with the declaration in April 2019, and really consistently embedding climate leadership in all your strategic planning that you've been doing. And we also want to acknowledge the commitments that the District of Suk has already made, including greenhouse gas emission reduction actions that are included in your master planning document and several other important initiatives that are listed here, ending most recently with your adoption of the Low Carbon Resilience Framework. So I think we're proud of the work that the district is doing. And at the same time, we'll acknowledge that the size of the climate emergency means that there's still work to be done. And I think on the committee, we're hoping to help identify a few key areas where action will still be necessary and useful and try to support the district in moving on those areas. So I'm going to start with one of them with, which is Suk's greenhouse gas reduction target. And if you were going to simplify the climate emergency quite a bit, you could basically say that it's a pollution problem that all over the world, we're reducing, we're emitting greenhouse gases into the atmosphere and changing the biosphere. So Suk is, is contributing to that pollution problem. And Suk's contribution can be measured so that we can say that as of 2018, we were emitting into the atmosphere forty seven thousand tonnes of carbon dioxide equivalent greenhouse gases. So the challenge that we share with every jurisdiction on the planet is that we need to reduce that current emission level to zero eventually. Now, you have already identified an emissions reduction target for the district. This is on your district website as well as on our Terms of Reference. And it is a forty to fifty percent reduction in emissions by 2030. And this is a perfectly reasonable target to start with. But I'm here tonight because I'd like to recommend that we refine the target just to make it a more effective management tool for you. A tool that you can use to plan your actions more specifically, to monitor your progress and to report on your progress, so that we can be even more successful. So just to begin with, if you look at that target, you have a range that you're trying to reach forty to fifty percent. When you're planning what to do, it's a little bit harder to determine what you're planning if you're aiming for a range rather than a specific number, and also to report on that. So I would like to recommend that you choose a specific number instead of a range and that that specific number be fifty percent. And then if you have a large goal that you're trying to reach in an extended period of time, it can be much more effective if you break that into manageable, actionable pieces and you figure out what does that mean for this year and for next year. So another way that you can express a fifty percent reduction is by saying you're going to reduce current emissions by seven percent a year. So my proposed new target that I'm recommending to you is a fifty percent reduction in emissions from 2018 levels by 2030, or seven percent a year. So I just want to give you a little bit of the rationale around choosing that fifty percent number. It's at the top of the range in your current target, but it's in the middle of the range that's recommended by the Intergovernmental Panel on Climate Change that is advising jurisdictions all over the world on climate action. You'll find that local governments in B C are starting to coalesce around that fifty percent number. So Sandage is at fifty percent, Collet is at forty nine percent reductions targets, and Nelson has gone further in that they're aiming towards a seventy five percent reduction. And the B C Municipal Climate Leadership Council, led by a former UBCM president, has also stated in their vision that they are wanting to achieve a fifty percent reduction by 2030. So that's the company that you would be keeping by choosing that fifty percent reduction target. When we talk about seven percent a year, I do want to reiterate that that's not a different number. It's just another way to express that fifty percent goal. It's the job that you would have to do in order to reach fifty percent reduction by 2030 in your current emissions. And when we look at successful jurisdictions around the world that are already being successful in reducing their emissions, some examples I have here are Scotland and Oslo. Those are both jurisdictions where they have a yearly target that's defined in different processes. And they're reporting on that emission every year, in Scotland's case, and three times a year in Oslo's case. So somebody connected with the Oslo process has said, perhaps you would think there is a downside to this in having a yearly target, that we're extremely exposed to failure, but it works in quite the opposite way. It triggers faster action to decarbonise. So in other words, having that yearly target that you're reporting on annually makes it more likely that you're going to be successful in climate leadership. And I think all of us here on the committee are taking part because we want to see you be the most successful climate leaders you can be, and we want to help you, help support you in that. So one of the things we have been doing on the committee is asking the question, what would a seven percent reduction look like per year and how would we actually achieve it? And I wanted to give you a brief overview of what that looks like. The, the analysis isn't complete, and so I don't want to give you a full description of what the final results would be, but just to give you some, an idea of the work that's underway. We're calling it at the moment, the seven percent solution. So we've asked what emission cuts are already planned in the district in your master planning documents. And then since we know specifically what we would be heading towards if we're trying to achieve a seven percent reduction a year, what remains to be done, and we can be very specific about identifying the gap. We've then started to review all the possible actions that the district could take to reduce emissions in line with that goal. We've started to calculate the possible reductions that you could expect to see from each action and assess the results. And when we're assessing the results, we're looking for the actions that are most likely to be successful. We're looking for high-impact actions. They're going to be limited in number, they're going to give you the largest reductions possible for the effort that you put into them. They will have data available that would allow you to track your process, your progress. The actions will be in the local government jurisdiction, and we're looking at where there might be funding sources to support you. So something that we could develop for you would be a five-year plan for reductions that would help you achieve that seven percent goal per year. There would be a limited number of actions in that plan, and it would augment the reductions that are already underway in the district. And they would probably, I don't want to say for sure yet, but probably be focused on just two action areas, energy use in buildings and on-road transportation. So that is to come in the future, but just an idea of the work that's underway. And in the meantime, I want to leave you with the two motions that came from the data working group that were approved unanimously by the committee at our last meeting. The first motion was around asking for your support for an updated emissions target to help, to use it as a more effective management tool. And the second one was around a meeting with the OCP leads around emissions reductions targets. So I'm going to pause there for questions and comments about this section of the report, because I know it's a little bit of detail. But just to acknowledge that my colleague Elizabeth Lang also has a short presentation on the engagement strategy that she is also planning to deliver. Thank you.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you very much for, for the presentation and for sharing your screen with us. And I really like the five-year plan. And I think for local government, it's, that setup just works because we're so accustomed to putting together strategic plans or five-year budget rolling plans that are constantly evaluated and updated. So it's, it's familiarity with what we already use as a very important planning tool when we look at capital infrastructure upgrades and what do we need to save to plan for X? Like, there's just so much familiarity with that system. So I really appreciate that a lot. And just, yeah, so thank you very much for the presentation. Questions from members of council? So councillor St Pierre, go ahead, please.
I'm, I'll also thank you for the presentation. That was wonderful and tremendously informative. And the only thing that I would hope is that when you're actually considering which priorities, you, you mentioned two, and those make a huge amount of sense. But those are obviously the internal emissions, and those are the ones we can easily measure. And as you're, as I'm sure you're aware, there's also the external stuff that's a lot harder to, to measure. And if you look at the Sandage Sustainability Scan and draw down various other documents, the biggest source of carbon emissions is actually our food systems. And changes in diet are one of the biggest things that we can actually do in terms of actually addressing, reducing carbon. So I'm hoping that there'll be something in your recommendations around that as well, and maybe not to limit to just two recommendations or two priorities.
Yeah, thank you. I think that's an excellent point, and I thoroughly agree with you about the importance of food-related emissions. And I think it's possible, I'm not exactly sure, but Elizabeth's presentation may touch on that as well. I'm just, in terms of narrowing it down to a very specific, limited number of actions, I'm conscious of the capacity of the district and not wanting to overwhelm people with what we're demanding, but also wanting to support you to achieve this target that, that we're suggesting.
Thank you. Do I have other questions from members of council comments? Councillor Beddoes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, I'm a, thank you very much, by the way, but I am a little confused about the 7% because in your report, you say a lot of that is, is based on things outside of the local government, like electric cars and subsidies and carbon taxes and things like that. And yet in your, your verbal one here, you mentioned that these are all doable at the local government stage or, or, or in our bailiwick. And I've been asking for a long time, give us something from, from this committee, give us something specific that we can do. And I have yet, I have yet to see much. So I'm a little confused as to what that 7% or the 50%. We can get 50% greenhouse gas reductions without any input or changes from the provincial government and the federal government? Is that what you're saying? I, I just need a clarification.
Yeah, and I, I don't want to commit myself to a, a specific answer to that in terms of the analysis, it's still underway. But I'm, my goal in doing that analysis, and I know the committee is going to hold me to that as well, is making sure that the recommendations are specific to local jurisdiction. But also, I think, not being too, I don't know, afraid of what local government is capable of, that we want to encourage you to do the most that you can and maybe challenge you about what that might be. It might be a little bit more than you think. At the same time, I do want to say that there's definitely a role for advocacy in the, towards the federal and provincial governments. But I also think that this kind of strategy where you're saying we have this specific goal of 7% a year, and this is how we're going to try to achieve it, it makes it more obvious what you're asking for when you're advocating to other levels of government, and I think gives you a stronger case when you, when you need that partnership. The other thing I will say is that the territorial emissions that are calculated for Suke, there's attached to, to Suke, are the responsibility of this jurisdiction to address. And so we're going to try to help you do that. But it is fundamentally a territorial, territorial emissions, and they've already been narrowed down to the ones that can be connected to this Suke region and are not including the other emissions that, that you would have even greater difficulty accepting as being relevant to Suke.
Oh, yeah, I, I have a little bit of difficulty with that because I have not seen anything in the way of any specifics in this report. They're very, very broad and like a wish list, and I don't mind having wish lists. I don't mind, you know, going, have a target in sight. But when, when I do a commitment to lock in to this, and that's what we'll be doing, I see most of the, a lot of these things are not achievable locally. I mean, I, I would love somebody to say, okay, Al, here is a program that you can do in Suke that is going to reduce your greenhouse gases by 3% this year. And I've yet to see it.
Yeah, and I, I guess what I'm saying, sorry.
I don't see it in your report either.
No, and I, I haven't given it to you because that's where I'm saying, I'm, I'm telling you that that work is underway, but it hasn't been completed. But my goal and my intention is to provide you with those actionable items that are within local government jurisdiction in a month or two. And then you would actually see what's there, and we could have, we could discuss this even further. I'm not interested in recommending to you a whole bunch of actions that you can't implement because that does not allow you to be leaders and successful leaders in climate change. I'm interested in recommending actions that you can achieve. So I think I have the same goal as you. And I'm, I'm just, I wanted to give you an idea of what we're working on, but I haven't, we haven't developed the full proposal yet. So yes, you're not seeing what you're looking for yet, but I'm trying to tell you that it's underway.
Okay, I, I guess I'll just have to hope that that comes along because I've been racking my brains on things that we could do locally. And I was at two-year committee, it was under councillor St Pierre, and I asked for, you know, give me three or four specific things that we could work on now. And I saw nothing, so, and I don't see anything here, so I'm a little frustrated. I'd like to have a little bit more fleshed out before we commit to anything. But I appreciate the, the work you're doing, and I, and I, you know, I certainly believe in a climate emergency, and we do have to reduce our greenhouse gases. But the proof is in the pudding, and I would like to see something specific. But you say you can't supply me with that information, so I'll have to let it go at that.
Okay, we'll circle back to that, councillor Beddoes. I do have a speaking order now, so I'm going to go to councillor La Genesse, then councillor McMath, and then councillor St Pierre, and then councillor Bateman, and then we'll see where we're at. So over to councillor La Genesse, please.
Yeah, so I would echo councillor Beddoes's comments there. The proof is in the pudding, and, and I, I want my pudding. I would like to, to see where, like, it seems to me that this 50% reduction over the next nine years seems to be a number that's kind of pulled out of thin air without some actionable steps that we as a municipality can take. For example, we might be reducing our local emissions, but if we all go out and buy 15,000 Teslas in the next year, that's going to contribute a large amount of greenhouse gases elsewhere, which we've reduced our numbers locally, but the net result is not, does not constitute a reduction. And I think that a lot of, a lot of what we're already doing, we've, we've hired an E C D A officer, we've, we're, we have an Economic Development Commission because we're trying to generate local jobs to get people out of their cars and, and working locally. We have a transportation master plan that we are working on implementing so that we can have a more connected street network, so that we can have better public transit, so the buses don't have to drive into a cul-de-sac and back out again. It's like, that's one of the, one, another key issue that we have. But we have the Parks and Trails Master Plan, we have the step code that's coming in. So what is the effect of what we're already doing on, on this, this 7% per year reduction? And also, the 7%, is that per capita? Because we are growing, and so, yeah, but there, there are some complex calculations that need to happen to actually determine what, what the net result of our actions will be. And I'm not trying to, to diminish the work of, of the committee, and I realize the importance and how feel very strongly about this myself. But yeah, there, there, there are a few unanswered questions, I think, before we commit to a 50% reduction over nine years.
So I guess all I'd like to say to that briefly is that you have already committed to a 40 to 50% reduction over nine years. So I'm just asking you to be more specific. And when I say that it's 7% a year, it's not, that's not anything new. That's just, what does 50% a year mean? I guess I'm coming from, at it from a slightly different approach, where I'm saying, what's the size of the job that needs doing? And the I P C C has told us the size of the job that needs doing. And then the next question is, okay, well, how do we achieve it? And there's no question that you've already undertaken several initiatives at the district. But do you know how many emission reductions that will give you? I don't think we've, we've done that as part of the planning process. Whereas saying you need to achieve 7% a year would kind of encourage you to do that analysis sooner and know what have you already achieved, and then what's left? And, and how can we achieve those locally?
Thank you very much. Okay, councillor McMath, you're up next.
Just echoing the two previous councillors' statements, I think the biggest contribution that Suke makes to these contributions are the driving. And when you mention different municipalities that are not comparable, it's, I think that's one of the pieces that we're missing. So when you speak of Sandwich, that's a well-established municipality that's much older than Suke, that doesn't have the transportation challenges that Suke does. And I also don't want to set us up for failure either when we, we are on the right tracks, we think that's why there's some hesitancy there around that. We know that we do love having it down to like a yearly measurable to keep us up. I think that's just, that's the piece where there's a little bit of confusion from, and hesitancy from the group right now. But like we all just said, we really appreciate the work that's going on. Don't want to deter you at all. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Okay, councillor McMath, I think we got most of it, but you were cutting in and out. So were you looking for a reply from our delegation, or more just re, kind of restating what the other councillor said?
Classic Suke road connectivity issues.
Yeah, that's the thing, right?
Yeah, I'll, I'll jump in when I have a more secure connection at home. No need to respond, thank you.
Okay, thank you councillor McMath. Okay, councillor St Pierre, please. Then Bateman, yep.
I just wanted to respond to some of the comments, and the first thing I'd like to say, I think we're
Sorry, councillor St Pierre, was I to call councillor Bateman next before councillor St Pierre?
I don't believe so.
Okay, I wasn't sure if councillor Bateman was doing a point of order, so I'm just checking. Sorry to interrupt you.
Well, I'm sure Tony will say much of what I'm saying. I don't know if there's a second time speaker or committee, the whole. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so sorry councillor St Pierre, continue, and then I'll go to councillor Bateman.
That's quite all right. I, I think that one of the things that was mentioned was just setting up for failure. And I think that what is being suggested here is setting us up for success. So rather than, you know, looking at this as we have many opportunities to fail, we just have many opportunities to succeed. The other thing is that by actually putting in the groundwork for 7% per year, a lot of the initiatives that are undertaken are going to actually produce results later, or start producing minimal results initially, but basically start rolling them out. So in terms of actually really succeeding at this, and we have to succeed at this, we have no choice. Otherwise, we are looking at some really severe consequences. And so it's not just legally from the province we have to do this, but there's, you know, larger survival based reasons for making, for being successful. We're setting ourselves up for success. The other thing is that ambitious targets, I think, I don't know who, who has a magic. You're not going to excite people with a fuzzy wuzzy 50% thing that could be put off until 2029. If people are actually going to get on board, we have to have ambitious targets, get everybody on board. Otherwise, we're not going to actually succeed. No, we don't necessarily know exactly how everything's going to work, but people also didn't know how are we going to land someone on the moon. You actually set the ambitious target, and then you start putting in a plan to make it happen. And so if we want to succeed with a big story, with making this large thing happen, which has to happen, this is a way to basically approach it.
Okay, thank you councillor. Councillor Bateman, please, thank you.
Okay, first, thank you, Ms Russell, for a very clean, clear, process-oriented, iterative kind of beginning to what is an unfolding process here. I'd like to remind councillor Beddoes and councillor La Genesse, McMath, that we are mandated by the, as a signatory to the B C Climate Action Charter of 2007 to have our O C Ps have a target within them. Our 2010 O C P, as councillor La Genesse will know, has a 33% reduction target by 2020. Now, that target has now lapsed, so we no longer have an official target in the O C P. And on a, on a total carbon basis, we managed between 2007 and 2018 to reduce by 0.1%. Now, the per capita number is, as you said, councillor La Genesse, is better. I think we're around a 15 to 20% reduction when you factor in that over that period, our population grew by about 4,000 people, I think it was. So effectively, the new O C P will have a new target, it's mandated to do so. As Ms Russell says, we're currently working with this 40 to 50% target. Clean B C has indicated the 40% target is what we need to be aspirational for by 2030. The B C, Arjun Singh, who leads this U B C M-related B C Municipal Climate Action Group, they've said 50%, that in fact, the provincial target's a little slow, given the urgency of change we need to make. So they've set 50%, and as Ms Russell says, that's the upper end of the range we're currently looking at. While at the same time, that's in the middle of the range that the international authorities are asking jurisdictions around the world to adopt. Councillor Beddoes, you mentioned that the Climate Action Committee previously has not delivered any, any tangible items to chew over for the district. In fact, they did deliver their 2020 action plan, which has a series of points that we as a district have made commitments to, including looking at the agricultural plan. Councillor St Pierre can, I've got it all written down here somewhere. There, there were a number of key points. The other, other key point is councillor Beddoes, you noted, well, what can the district do? Well, the district, in terms of this 7% solution, will be in fact enacting the Transportation Master Plan and the Parks and Trails Master Plan. And there will be reductions within that on an annual basis. At the same time, we're seeing cultural change. So that shift on Highway 14 to electric vehicles. B C is the leading, the leading adopter of E Vs in Canada. We're up to 10% of new vehicle sales last year were E Vs. So that is, is, the district doesn't have to do anything about that other than what our Climate Energy and Emissions Plan suggests is that we do proper promotion ongoing of, of all rebates for, for heat pumps, electric vehicles, the whole package. So that will help with this 7% annual change as we, we promote these things out. So I think whatever way we go tonight, it's with the sure knowledge that the O C P will set a new target for Suke. And given that we're seeking to be a green and net-zero community by 2050, I imagine it will be a relatively, well, it wouldn't be ambitious. It would be in line with how every other jurisdiction in Canada is proceeding. No questions for you, Ms Russell, but.
Okay, so what I thought I would do is I'm going to give a few comments, and then I'm going to go to the next part of the delegation, then to public input, and then council can consider resolutions at that, in that order. I just wanted to comment that what I like about this particular layout is that the committee needs to understand what work they want to see from council. So if we say, yeah, you know, target something between 40 and 50, these are committee members now that are taking their time to come up with something in, in that range. So we need to start being more specific. The way that I see this is that should we, council endorse the 50%? Then we're going to receive from the committee the next, okay, council, you want a 50%? This is now what this will look like. So here's some great things that are happening, we want more of that. Here's some things that you will need to consider in your next budget, maybe in the next vehicle, which we're already doing, needs to be an E V of some nature, or be on a, on a biodiesel form, whatever. Here's other good practices that the district could take through its operations. And then we can look at what is achievable and what isn't. The other piece it would do is that if we see, okay, well, there's the recommendations, you know, and I see a list here, then we can say, okay, here's where we're going to have challenges. So for example, we don't have transit the same as other places. So then it's the case of we know going in, we're going to struggle to meet this until the transit system and the local area plan has been actually funded through the commission. It was, the intent was that that was going to happen last year, and then Covid just threw it all out the window. But meanwhile, we're continuing to work with our master plan, taking in what safe and accessible transit use looks like for those who can actually use it, recognizing that for some, it's just not going to be, going to be an option because of where they live, work however, and, or the transit schedule is just not going to accommodate shift worker like councillor McMath for that reason, or many others. But then we can advocate and say, okay, provincial government or federal government, we are now challenged to meet this, so we need you to provide X to our this, so we need you to provide X to our community now specifically, because now we have something that isn't just for all of B C or for all of Canada. Now, we've hit something that our community is a mix of rural, urban, suburban, is going to be struggled with because of these. So now we need to work together with you on this item specifically, which is more unique to Sook than it might be to another community in, in the capital. So it's just for our committee, if we keep, is it this, or is it that, or is it this? They need something that they can come back with, that they can work with our staff. Okay, what is council planning now? What's in the capital budget? What are you funding for infrastructure? And how can we achieve those? And I also think it will, it'll, to those that are already transitioning, they're doing a great job. So here's other things. Thank you very much for all that you're doing. Here's the next pieces, and what does that look like? We're already seeing some folks even ditch the second vehicle in favor of an e-bike. So from going from gas funded, you know, Dodge whatever to an E V, like that's not just going from a, a second car to an E car, it's gone right to a bicycle, which is a tremendous shift. And there's many in our community that are able to do that. We also know that many are also going to be able to have the options to continue to work from home, or to not have to commute every day. I understand that is not the reality for everyone. But we need to start planning something, and our committee needs direction from us, and we're going to need solid recommendations from them. And that's why I think we need to set something that is bit, that is a bit more specific and, and in the range. So I totally, you know, we'll come back to a recommendation later after we hear the, but I can see how I like, that's where I like the way the, the reporting has been done so far. So thank you. Okay, so I'd like to go, as I said, to the next part of our delegation, please, for that presentation, and then we can get more comments from council, and then we can invite members of the public to speak as well. Thank you. Go ahead, please.
Good evening. I'm Elizabeth Lang, and it's a deep pleasure to, to be here. And I would like to thank council, actually, for the amazing team you've put together. The level of knowledge and skills on our team is really quite phenomenal. And people like Anna, I've seen some of the amazing work she's doing. She didn't feel ready to present it yet, but some excellent pie charts that show exactly where the emissions are and. So our, my task now is to present on behalf of the Education and Engagement Committee, and I just want to bring that up. Can you see that?
Yes, it's coming over. Yep, there it is. Thank you.
710%.
Does that still work?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so I'd like to add that specializes actually in climate communications and media studies. And so how fortunate is that? And also, I'd like to thank Counselor Bateman as well for his thoughtful guidance in what we're doing on this subcommittee. So climate communication is key. Without buy-in, it doesn't matter how good the tools are that we develop. People need to be excited to participate in such a community goal, such as a 7% a year reduction, and they must see the benefits, benefits really for themselves. So this is the other half of the task that our committee has taken on. So providing really tangible goals, and then trying to develop the communication and engagement strategies to go along with that. The goal is really to develop a very highly participatory and responsive project, process that offers all sorts of different kinds of engagement mechanism, builds local support, and is very inclusive. And so we also want to address that different groups of people take on change at different times. And this is called the theory of rate of change. After much research and comparing all of the different mechanisms that we're familiar with, we settled on a change framework called storytelling. This is a leading edge method. It's evidence based, and recent studies have really indicated that humans really are not as logical in our decision making as we like to think. Rather, we're very hardwired for story. So in addition, there are many studies that say 30% of any population is willing to join a campaign for two reasons. One, if they're invited by someone they trust, and secondly, if they have a compelling story of an achievable and inclusive future. For people to make emission reductions changes, we're assuming that almost 3% are already doing it. They're the innovators. So we would be aiming initially to attract the early adopters, so the 13.5%, and then after that, the early majority, 34%. So this involves identifying people who are open to change, but uncertain or not sure what would actually make a difference. And so from Anna's work, what we're hoping is we can actually name specific things that will make a difference, and that are measurable and can get us to that goal. So these two pieces, parts of the population is 50%. The late majority, the next 34%, will join in when they see that there's actual social proof of change happening, and that the change is inevitable. With appropriate policy and practices, some of which we hope to recommend, eventually, the change simply becomes inevitable. And so the yellow line shows the pace of change. And eventually, with enough changing of the conditions in which people are making their decisions, you know, it becomes the new scenario. And so eventually, the, the participation reaches 100%. So how does it work? What is story design? There's four phases, and the first one is called finding the problem story. So we would first identify the big picture problem. So not just the emissions reduction problem, which is huge, but really what's at the root of that. And right now, we know we're, we are a human world that does not currently harmonize our systems with the living world systems, and often doesn't value a well society, as you were talking about previously. So once we do that, then it's clear what the status quo stories that we keep telling ourselves, the things that can't be changed, what is, what is it that actually needs changing? The second step to this is to figure out the success story. So we would find one future image that speaks to the many in Sook, a compelling image of emissions free future. Then the third step is blocking stories. What are the current stories people tell themselves that stop them from making some changes? In other words, what are all the reasons for low engagement to date? And then finally, this is the big piece, what is the change story? So then what we do is we, by working with a number of different groups across Sook, we would design and test these stories, especially a master change story, and those that counter some of the blocking stories. So this is what is called a stackable story process, and it's iterative, in that you continually to revisit these stories as conditions change over the years. For instance, if we have another pandemic, let's say in three years, and that would again, once again, change the conditions in which we're working, which changes in the engagement plan. And you also need to be, continue to be collaborative in the community until you reach your final goal. So what's our timeline and process? Well, we're hoping to do a soft launch, piggybacking on the efforts by Christina Moog, the Communications Coordinator. She's launching the Carbon Calculator and Bang the Table. So we would like to contribute by submitting some questions to her to find out what people are already doing as a baseline, changes they've already made, what makes change difficult. And then we also would like to profile the existing climate champions, or what I've already identified as the innovators. Then from April to September, we would like to build the story strategy, and I'll explain a little bit more about that in a minute. And then around September, October, we'd like to do a hard launch of a communications and engagement campaign using a story strategy toward the ultimate goal of providing you as council with a communication, engagement, and education plan. So just a few details on building the story strategy. So we would collect and test different change stories by population segment. Another piece that goes along with this is determining what are the incentives to assist people? What are the disincentives to discourage some kinds of behaviors? And nudge factors to remind people or to take them over the edge into, for instance, like finding grant funding, and default choices. So that would be policies that would simply make something a default choice. And all of these put together can encourage a change process. The other things we're hoping to do is to develop a communication as our materials, promotional materials, as well as educational materials. And we're hoping maybe an outline of an inspiring workshop that could be given to different segments of the population. So our ultimate goal for you this year is to create a five-year communication, engagement, and education plan, which is broad, so it can really get broad engagement in all sorts of different facets, but also very targeted. So we would actually identify specific participants, for instance, who wish to move to working from home, or buying an E V vehicle, or who, you know, 200 households, for instance, that maybe want to go to a heat pump. So we would actually work in a broad way, so people can engage however they like. We would get a broad suite of options, but also to really identify and call on volunteers who would really take on this very targeted, these targeted actions to ensure, and these would be measured, so that we are actually achieving the 7% every year, and that would be then reported back out to Sook citizens every year. So all of this is really a citizen call to action for really reaching an emissions free Sook. So why are we here? Well, we would like to ask to be able to contract Denise Withers as our story process facilitator. She is very highly qualified and award winning story design expert with 35 years of experience. She is one of the top in the field, and this is her book that we're following, and we've also been in communication with her several times. She's actually from Holican Beach now, and she has had many high level clients, including Romeo Delair, Sea Legacy, Wild Foundation, in carrying out similar climate related work. As a certified leadership coach and communications consultant, she will coach us really in developing a made in Sook strategy. Most importantly, the key thing that she's able to offer us is actually to facilitate the participatory sessions with different groups across Sook for developing this story strategy. And there are other things that she can do with us as well, but we feel that we just want to do this first piece of work with her. And there, so there are some other options, I think, that we provided to you in some of the support materials that she could help us to move forward. And also, the other argument here, I guess, is that once our group disbands, then she would, with Christina, be able to help carry the strategy forward. Just a bit of information on Denise's project. So right now, she's working at Royal Roads, which is where I heard her on a webinar. She is working with the Adaptation Learning Network, key piece of work, assisting workforce development for climate change adaptation. So she's right in the heart, right in the guts of where things are happening. And you can check out, these didn't get into our report, but you'll have this PowerPoint presentation, and you can check out the, the work that she's done in these areas. So what are her deliverables for us? What we would end up with after several months work with her is one master change story, which then gets translated into all the promotional materials, all the educational materials, what different courses and, and so on. Also, she would then design three tailored change stories adapted by population segments. So we would do all the background research to figure out different elements that would appeal to different parts of our population. And then finally, one elevator pitch. So the third part of, or the third motion of our three motions that came from our committee from March 30th is that the Climate Action Committee requests $7,500 be drawn from the carbon tax rebate reserve fund to hire communications consultant Denise Withers to assist the Education and Engagement Working Group and the District's Communication Coordinator in the design and launch of the first steps in a climate action citizen mobilization campaign. So I'll leave that and open for questions.
Excellent. Thank you very much for the thoughtful presentation. Again, it's fantastic. Thank you. I will go, if you could please stop screen sharing, and then that way I can see all of council. Or.
Are we there?
That's perfect. Thank you very much. Okay, so thank you. So look for questions from members of council, please. Counselor Beddoes, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, again, on this recommendation number two, what would that look like? You want to approach the O C P, which is sort of past its stage of getting information. We're very close to writing things. How do you see that engagement happening? I'm not quite clear. Do you want to be a part of the O C P? Do you just want to present to the O C P? Or I'm not quite clear on that. So if you could just clarify that, please.
So I think that is relevant to my presentation rather than Beth's. This is Anna speaking. Do you want me to respond to that now or deal with?
Well, it hasn't been covered yet. I didn't know whether we're going from 7.2, the second half of that, or right on to 7.4. So I would like that question, recommendation two, answered. But when it's answered is completely up to the chair.
Right.
Do the other, that's fine with me.
And I was on mute, sorry. All of these recommendations flow out of tonight's presentation, so we can have that answered now. And yeah, if, if, I'll ask my delegation, please, if you don't mind just answering the counselor's question.
Of course, yeah. So I understand that the O C process, O C P planning process is well underway. And one of the requirements of that process is to include an updated target for greenhouse gas emissions reductions. So having done all this discussion and work within the Climate Action Committee, we would like to just meet with the O C P leads to talk to them about their G H G emission reductions targets, what they're thinking, and to provide our advice as part of their process in developing the target for the O C P. That's really all we're seeing in terms of that recommendation, but we're asking council to facilitate that meeting.
I might jump in and add, too. I think we're, we're interested in the O C P process. It has been already a participatory process, and I'm sure there's a lot of information in there that we could build from. So I'd be interested in either participating in that or for certain building on that process, because we would not want to repeat, you know, a really well designed participatory process that you've already put in place. So we're looking at how these things can dovetail effectively.
Yeah, and it's to have our committees sort of sharing information and working together. They're all district led committees.
Yeah.
Does that help, Counselor Beddoes?
No, it, I just want to know how physically that works out. I mean, I certainly, any information that the O C P committee can get to help us make the decisions that we need to make is welcome. I'm not trying to say that they're not welcome. I'm just not sure how that's worded. You know, do they want to make a presentation? They want us to make a presentation to them? They want to be in a separate working group that we, when we go along and do the hard work that we've been tasked to do with some very, very sharp people? That we do it in conjunction with them, or we do it under our own mandate and ask for their advice when needed? I'm just not clear where that sits.
Okay, maybe I'll ask Mr., I'll ask our staff. Mr. McInnes, do you might have, I mean, to me, I see it as a joint virtual teams meeting for the moment. Okay, maybe I'll ask Mr., I'll ask our staff. Mr. McInnes, do you might have, I mean, to me, I see it as a joint virtual Teams meeting for the moment. Do you, can you perhaps just give a bit more guidance back to council, please?
Thank you, your worship. And yes, the vast majority of the data has been gathered at this point through the Phase One and Phase Two engagements. The OCP committee will have a workshop on that on April 22nd, so coming up this week. So that the OCP committee will get a pretty good idea of what sustainable solutions and dialogue have garnered through engagement. I would suggest that probably having the Climate Action Committee as a delegation at one of the upcoming, quickly, OCP committees probably is the best thing. And then the 7% solution, the storytelling, these two pieces that were presented to the committee the whole tonight could be presented to the OCP committee as well. See what sort of overlaps, dovetails are there. And it may give the OCP committee some connections that are more local in flavor than otherwise that you may see. So that's what I would say, a delegation of the CAC committee at an upcoming OCP advisory committee.
Okay, thank you.
To the chair, thank you very much for that, because that's the clarity that I was looking for. And I don't have a problem with that. I mean, we hear from a large number of people in our community, and this group has some valuable things to say, and I'm all for that. I'm not trying to shut them out or anything like that. It just was not clear. It sounded like they wanted to be part of the working group as we work through all this information. And we have an OCP committee with some very, very talented people on there. And I just didn't want to see it get expanded to another half a dozen people. So certainly welcome their delegation. I certainly welcome the information that they can give us. So if that's what it's going to be, I don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, I sort of see it as the meeting of the minds. Like, in the recommendation, we do have the CAC's data working group to meet with the advisory committee and so forth, as is noted, just so that everyone is on sort of the same page. And if not, why? So then we can, the Climate Committee, I mean, it would be interesting. For example, the OCP committee says, you know, actually, we need to do 55%, and here we're having a committee working towards 50, just as an example. So then that way, okay, then we have two committees working together, but not necessarily together all the time. It's just sharing on those touchpoints. And I see the same thing needing to happen, actually, with all of our committees as they hit different stages in the work that they're doing. Okay, other question?
I don't have any problem with that, Mayor. I just, we need clarification. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So other questions from members of council? Councillor Bateman?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Lang, for the presentation, and Councillor Beddoes for welcoming the data group. The data group's quite a solid group of citizens. We have Steve Unger, Solar Power Specialist. We have Cassandra Schlozak, who is SUC-based, works for the Alberta Energy Regulator with GHG, doing community planning on that front. And we have Anna Russell, a public policy specialist. So again, as with the other 50 committee members we have in this community, this is volunteer gold. And I just want to note that in my time here on council, I think we, I personally voted on, along with the rest of you, over $400,000 in consultancy fees. And here we're receiving this wonderful work from two of our council committee members already. So over to you, Ms. Lang. I'm just curious, how much time do you think you'll require from Ms. Moog, who has been participating in our working group meetings and providing a lot of fantastic, enthusiastic masters-level work? How much time do you anticipate you'd need from her?
Well, I think at the beginning, what we're trying to do is really build a process for designing this. And Christina knows of Denise's work. She loves her work. Shandell knows her work as well, and so they're all very supportive of working with Denise. And I would imagine that at the beginning, probably not all that much, other than attending the different sessions that Denise facilitates. Beyond that, I'm not sure. I think as we develop the plan, we'll have a better idea. But I would imagine at some point, even 10%, four hours a week. I mean, what we're going to try to do is really build a process for each year that is actionable, that you have specific targets, and there's a specific way to engage with people. So once our committee disbands, and what we would like to do is really offer a piece of our report that resources you. So you know who in the community you could go to, where there are financial resources, and also where there's expertise. And so we would try to find all of those pieces so that the plan is completely workable from the council's point of view.
Okay.
Okay.
Sounds good. My other question regarded, I know this is all very iterative and will be figured out over the coming months, if indeed we get the funding tonight. This hard launch in the fall, what, do you have any sense right now what that might look like?
Yeah, so what we're trying to get to is some key messages, so taglines, and then a master change story that gets rolled out in all sorts of promotional materials, all sorts of community engagement. Hopefully, we'll maybe be able to get together. But if not, virtual community gatherings where we could start to really build some momentum will present some tools for assessing effectiveness and reporting in mechanisms as people make change. How can they inform us? How can we add that into some of our calculations of reducing emissions of the 7% a year? And then also, I think what we would like to do is end up for you with an actual plan. So it shows you, okay, what's the communications piece need to look like? How do you resource it? What is actually the education piece? And we probably won't do as much on that because that's longer term, but at least we can give some outlines of what that looks like. And then the whole engagement piece. So how can we keep people engaged over a long period of time? How can we keep them excited? And how can we keep them volunteering and participating in the different actions that will help us reach the goals that we're hoping to reach as a SUC community?
Okay, thank you. Final question, and that is the fall of 2019, of course, or 2019. Fall of 2021, we could still be in this COVID scenario, right? So God forbid the fifth wave or something. But I guess what you'll be presenting would also be absolutely adaptable to a spring launch next year. And at which point, because this will cost some money, and we might need to get it into the 2022 budget.
Right. Yeah, so I think, you know, if we're still COVID-constrained in the fall, we certainly would be developing a social media strategy as part of this, and then also then community events. So whenever the timing is right and it's safe to move forward, then we can move forward with those pieces. So these things are not necessarily time-limited, but they would be adapted on the conditions that we find in each year.
Okay, so enough with the softball questions. Over to our fastball pitchers.
Okay, thank you, Councillor Bateman. Councillor McMath, did you have any questions?
No, fantastic presentation. It answered a lot of my questions. Thank you so much.
You're very welcome.
Excellent. And I'll just add further to Councillor Bateman's questions about staff resources. It'll be the case where Mr. McInnes will keep council informed of when we are overextending and need to consider resources. So that's the ongoing updates that we do receive, and we'll address that accordingly and take it from there. Okay, so I would now like to turn to our corporate, to our staff, please, or to our corporate services manager to introduce any members of the public that wanted to comment on tonight's delegation, please.
Thank you, your worship. I believe just Susan Belford has joined the meeting to speak to this item.
Okay, thank you. Good evening and welcome, Ms. Belford.
Hello, I'll be brief. Oh goodness, I've just lost my notes. Councillor La Genesse referenced SUC's ongoing growth, and that was a good point. And so I look forward to seeing emissions from new residential development being included in these targets at some point. Perhaps collaboration with Sustainable Solutions would provide some direction in this regard. I think it's important to firm up targets to 50% by 2030 through a manageable 7% a year method, and I urge council to support this work. The use of story is an excellent way to raise awareness in the general public and in our leaders as well. I think it's important, though, to recognize that this effort to reduce GHGs is, should not be placed all on the shoulders of individual citizens. And so I think it's important that engagement acknowledges this and speaks to how other jurisdictions, such as the District of SUC, but also the province and the federal government and so forth, can assist individuals in making these changes. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Belford, for joining with us tonight. Okay, council, so I'm going to go back to the suite of recommendations that come forward from the committee. I thought what I would do is just break them down. We can just do one at a time. And so what I'll do, because this is Councillor Bateman's committee, is I'll be going to him as the mover of each one, given that he is our appointed liaison. So the first one is that the Climate Action Committee recommend to council that SUC's emission reduction target be set as follows: A 50% cut from 2018 GHG emission levels by 2030 or 7% per year. This target should be in effect until supplanted by an equivalent or stronger target in the OCP. So Councillor Bateman, you're prepared to move that? Okay, speak now on the motion.
Well, I think it's all been said. Again, we're looking to lock in a target. It's a, it's a realistic target. It's a consensus target being agreed to by governments, local governments everywhere. I think it's setting a target now is essential for all the reasons Ms. Russell outlined, that it helps the district plan its actions better, as well as monitor results and report on progress. Yes, the OCP will establish a target, but that won't be released until next year. If we lock in at 50% now, I think it follows up on what our strategic plan promised, which is that we would demonstrate leadership in climate action and that we would respond to climate change boldly, very Star Trek, boldly go where no municipality's gone before. Well, we're not, we're not that progressive or stupid, because, yeah, it's a big leap off a cliff. But this is something tangible and doable, and we have some professionals on this committee who can help us get there. So, yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm in, I'm in favor of this. Of course, I've moved it. Thank you.
Okay, Councillor Beddoes, go ahead, please.
Yeah, with a great deal of misgivings, but I'd be willing to support it because I think somewhere along the line, there'll be some proof in the pudding, and we will get something that we can sink our teeth in. I haven't seen it yet. And hopefully, Councillor Bateman will send me what we've done from the CAC in the past and the GHG reductions that it has resulted in. But he'll do that on the side, I'm sure. So it's, we're almost there now. I don't have a big problem with it. But I just, it bothers me because I've been goal-setting all my life. I like to use SMART goals, and this doesn't really tick all those boxes. But I have to take the committee. They're doing hard work, and they're going to come back with some recommendations that will help us get to those GHG, whatever goals we end up with, because the government keeps changing the goal line many, many times over, and it's political. So, yeah, like I say, I would like to have seen more on some concrete examples. But I'm told that's going to come further down the line. I'm looking forward to them.
Okay, thank you. Would anyone like to speak on the motion? Councillor St Pierre, then La Genesse, then McMath, everyone is, okay.
Just very briefly, I'd like to thank the committee for the work they've done in terms of reference, coming up with such strong and clear language, for making it very actionable and working within the municipal process as well as they have. So kudos. Thank you, Councillor Bateman.
Okay, thank you. Over to Councillor La Genesse.
Yeah, I'm very grateful for the, for the talent that we have on this committee. And I'm glad that they're going to take a scientific approach, I'm sure, to this, to this issue. And like Councillor Beddoes, I was a little hesitant to set a lofty goal and without any plan of how to get there. But obviously, you need to have an idea where you're going, or you'll likely end up somewhere else. And so the plan will be sure to follow, and so I'm willing to support it.
Okay, thank you. Councillor McMath?
I think the only thing that's missing for me in the second motion or suggestion.
We're just on the first one. So we're on the first one, so just speak to the first one, please.
Oh, just the first, okay.
Because they're all broken up.
I'll hold my time.
Okay, I'll come back to you for the second one, okay? All right. Okay, thank you. So for myself, I just feel we have a committee. We want to use their time wisely. They've spent a considerable amount of time and energy coming forward with this recommendation. So I, you know, just in regards to everything that everyone else has said, I'm really looking forward to the next piece and want to just provide that motivation and direction back to the committee. Thank you for all the great work you're doing, and let's get on with, let's get on with it. So I'm going to call the question then. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you. So now we're on the second one in, and that is, oops, that is that the Climate Action Committee recommend to council that the CAC's data working group should meet, maybe take out "should," meets with the OCP Advisory Committee, SUC planning staff, and the representative from the Sustainable Solutions Group to discuss GHG target setting in the OCP and provide advice on what this OCP target should be. Councillor Bateman is comfortable moving it?
Yeah.
Okay, anything to add?
Yeah, I'll just say the CAO's recommendation is a good one. I would just hope that our representative from Sustainable Solutions Group would be at that meeting, because that's, he's the critical one we need to, or the data group needs to communicate with.
And that's why it'll be in the motion. So that's where that.
Right. So, yeah, I'll move the amended motion with the "should" removed.
There's actually no amendment. I just read it out, so. And that particular group is noted in here, so we're good. Councillor McMath, I'm over to you for your question.
Thank you. I just wanted, just a suggestion, doesn't have to be part of the motion, but to keep in mind the possibility of the group coordinating with the ECTV group, because I think a lot of these issues and a lot of our contributions, like those two pieces intertwine so beautifully. And from local jobs that prevent us from being a bedroom community to looking at these legacy pieces like the SUC Harbor House, who essentially created the 100-mile diet. Those are pieces that can reduce our emissions while complementing our health as a community. And I would just love for the groups to connect as well.
No, that's a very good, that's very good advice, Councillor McMath. So I think it's a case that once this meeting clears, then the Climate Action Committee, who is obviously here, can take that back and then look at scheduling the next one or, and see where they fit in together. Okay, anything further, Councillor Bateman on the motion?
So thank you, Councillor McMath. Yes, I think it's May 7th or May 5th that the two committees will meet. Yes, I think it's May 7th or May 5th that the two committees will meet for the first time. The CAO set us up for two meetings this year. And yes, indeed, there's wonderful synchronicities here. One of my pet ideas, and I think the others are on for it, is a local carbon scorecard, so that if I go and fill my growler at one of our local breweries, I always use alcohol references for some reason, I will be saving X carbon emissions as opposed to buying the six-pack of Budweiser. Likewise, if I shop at Sea of Bloom or any other local merchant as opposed to shopping via Amazon, what am I saving in that way? And then, you know, that's where the circular economy and community economic development really link in with climate action. So yeah, there we go.
Well said. Okay, so I will call the question on this. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you. And the last recommendation is that the Climate Action Committee recommend to council that 7,500 be drawn from the Carbon Tax Rebate Reserve Fund to hire communications consultant Denise Withers to assist the Education and Engagement Working Group and the district's communications coordinator in the design and launch of the first steps in a climate action citizen mobilization campaign. So again, I'll ask Councilor Bateman, you're comfortable to move that as the liaison? Thank you. Okay, anything further? Okay, would you like to speak?
It's such a mouthful, so you can tell who wrote that one, right? Yeah, it's a little wordy. But the point is that this is a relatively small sum. It's about half of what's in the Carbon Reserve Fund at the moment, and it's equivalent to one of the higher-end community grants that we'll be handing out. And I think it really will give enthusiasm and direction to the committee moving forward, so.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Bateman. Comments? Councilor St. Pierre, then Betos?
Yes, this is more or less in response to some of the questions in terms of, you know, how as a community can we actually respond, especially within our jurisdiction? And if you look at the work that's out there, choosing to ride a bike, choosing to buy a heat pump, choosing to buy less meat, these are all personal choices. And if we want to really make the reductions, we need the education mobilization, the stories that can motivate people and get people to make that change, they're critical. So I commend the committee again on the work in this direction, and I do think it's the right direction to take in terms of investing this money.
Thank you, counselor. Counselor Betos, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, a little bit out of order here. I just wanted to make a quick recommendation to this group on an idea that can save a lot of carbon in the future. When I was in grade two, which was 65 years ago, they brought us little trees into the class.
Oh, yes.
And we were all given that to take home and plant. And I'm thinking that's an idea that we can do in Sook. It's only going to cost a few thousand dollars to buy enough trees. And you know how big that tree is today? 65 years. So you think about all the carbon that's stored in that tree. I hope it's still there. It had been back for a while. But there is an idea, and that's sort of what I was looking for, is some ideas that we can champion here. And I think if you looked at that project for the education of the children, if you get the kids on side for some of these things, the parents will soon follow. So just something to keep in your mind, very easily done. I bought some seven years ago for a project for Lions. All our clubs planted trees. And I saw one in Ladysmith the other day, and it was that big seven years ago, and it's taller than me now. So that all captures carbon, and it could be a good PR thing. So just something that you might want to consider.
No, that's great advice. Yep. I was going to say that usually when we would attend AVIC in person, we actually get trees from one of the sponsors there to take home. So it's just with the virtual setting, it's impossible to receive swag like that. However, I think there is, and I'll share with you that even at Sook Elementary, it's Forest Friday now. Kids spend a lot of time outside, learning about, well, all things, all things Sook and nature, but they bring a lot of helpful things home. So thankfully, this light is on, but every other light in our house is off right now, thanks to my five-year-old, who doesn't want to waste any electricity or energy. So the lessons start...
Give him a tree, give him a tree.
Yeah, he likes something else to dig in the yard. Okay, perfect. So I think we're all good here, so I'll call. Anything on, okay, we've drifted. I've been out of order, so you can call a point of order. But back to the recommendation is where I'm going.
No, I just had a final comment. I wanted to thank Councilor Betos for that idea. And, you know, this outreach campaign is very much, the idea would be to go out and talk to our service clubs and talk to our schools and the nonprofits and NGOs and that sort of thing, and really make this as broad a campaign as possible. So it's wide open for ideas, and Trillion Tree Campaign is currently on globally, so let's do our part, too.
Excellent, thank you. Counselor La Genes?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment that I think, like most things in life, education is key. And we're fortunate enough to have Denise Withers in our neighborhood, and 7,500 is a measly sum to have that kind of talent provide us with the education that we need.
Thank you, counselor.
For the community. We know everything, but the rest of the community might need some help.
Well, I'm glad somebody does, because I know it's not on this side of the screen at the moment. Okay, so I'm going to call the question. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous as well. Thank you. So thank you very much to the delegation for presenting and for being with us tonight. We're excited and look forward to next steps. Process-wise, these recommendations flow to a regular council meeting, where they're actually sort of affirmed, because we're just sitting as committee of the whole. So yes, we are kind of making recommendations to ourselves, but it's just the way our procedure works. And at the same time, it does allow for further public input at that time. So just procedurally, that's what we'll see happen here. And otherwise, we wish you a good night, but feel free to stay in for the rest of the meeting and to join with us virtually. It's, yeah, there's no better way to spend a Monday night than at a council meeting, so thank you very much.
Thank you also very much for your support and excellent ideas and a rich discussion. We'll look forward to talking to you again.
Thanks. Excellent. Okay, be well. Thank you.
Yeah, you too. Bye.
So council, just mindful of the time. We're coming up on nine. We have a couple of items here. I'm going to ask if we need a five-minute break?
You know, there's small items. I figure we can get through them pretty quick, but that's just my opinion.
Okay, so I'm content to roll along in the same way. So my understanding is that we have no further public members joining with us tonight. So first off is 6.1, Public Interest Disclosure Policy. So this has come forward here, the very straightforward staff report. But I'm going to turn to staff, just if you would like to introduce this and provide anything further than what is in front of us. Thank you.
Thank you, worship. Yes, as you indicated, it is a fairly straightforward item. This came forward as a recommendation from our auditors in 2019, so the document that was received last year in 2020. And it's timely. Our audit is coming up again. The process has been improved to make it more clear how staff can go about reporting anything that they become aware of. And I think that's about it. If council has any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Questions from members of council? Okay, so, oh, go ahead, Councilor Bateman.
Yeah, I'll just make it quick here. So is this the best practice document you picked up from another municipality or through the LGMA?
Not through the LGMA. We looked around at other municipalities and used the city of Nanaimo. Theirs has been updated fairly recently and was very thorough, so we incorporated that along with our existing policy, and this is what we arrived at.
I guess the only problem I have is the removal of what actually constitutes serious misconduct. And I know that was in the 2011 policy, but now we're left just with the word "a serious act" or omission. And so who defines, and this is straight from that Nanaimo council meeting, when they approved that one of its councillors said, "Who defines what the serious act is?"
Your worship, if I could, this policy is built on the Public Disclosure Act that is provincial legislation. So all of the provincial departments actually have an act. Local government is defined as a public entity under that act. So if you look at the act, it has every step basically spelled out just as Nanaimo, and now the district of Sook policy is, including the definitions.
Ah, okay. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for that answer. So the recommendation is that the Committee of the Whole recommends council adopt CO-11 Public Interest Disclosure Policy and that the Committee of the Whole recommends council rescind whistleblower policy 7.2 2011. Do we have a mover, please? Moved by Councilor St. Pierre. Anything to motivate on, Councilor St. Pierre, as the mover? No? Any comments from any other member of the committee? No? I'll call the question then. All those in favor, please? And that's unanimous. Thank you. Next up is item 6.2, Strategic Priorities Chart Update. Over to Mr. McKinnis, please.
Thank you, your worship. I will share my screen here and don't mean to disappoint Councilor Betos. I only have 19 slides, and I'll try and get through them quickly, so hopefully you don't have to go to the washroom really bad.
Make sure you turn your video off if you do.
Can you see my screen appropriately?
Yes, I just need you to put it into slideshow mode so that the font size is bigger, please.
Is that better?
No, I'm still seeing it where it has the smaller one with your notes underneath, and then it has the tiles on the left-hand side.
Is that better?
Feel like I should be editing it.
Yeah, like it's in edit mode.
Okay, let me try this all over again.
I think you just need to click on slideshow at the top. There we go. That's perfect. Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you for your cooperation there. So the committee report and this presentation are meant to provide the quarterly update on the council's strategic priority chart for the period ending March 31st, 2021. So as stated in the attached report, during the spring and summer of 2019, significant engagement contributed to the development of the 2019 to 2022 council strategic plan. On September 30th, 2019, council approved the plan. And then, as we all know, the world changed in the middle of March in 2020. And notwithstanding the challenges of COVID-19, we've been able to keep our priorities in place for the most part, adding some urgent COVID-related things like caring for the unhoused, for example. On June 29th and August 7th of 2020, the CAO staff and council participated in a service capacity review workshop. And on September 14th, 2020, council received the Strategic Priorities 2021 Report, the Strategic Priorities Chart. And the current chart displayed on the screen right now was approved by council on February 2nd, 2021. The strategic plan includes three overarching goals: Build a reputable organization, demonstrate leadership in climate action in response to the climate emergency, and manage long-term growth while enhancing community identity, vitality, and safety. I will provide an update for each of the now and next actions on the chart. But before reporting on the Strategic Priorities Chart items, I will remind council that the chart, with its short-term focus, is always aligned with the long-term aspirations articulated in the vision and mission of the District of Sook. A strong vision is supposed to take us from our current reality to a preferred future. There are many systemic forces at work to prevent change, but moving towards our vision in a measured and methodical manner is supported by the short-term focuses of the Strategic Priority Chart. How we move incrementally towards our vision of being an inclusive, healthy, and self-sufficient community where the rainforest meets the sea is prescribed in our mission. The District of Sook strives to be a compassionate, engaged, and effective organization, providing excellent customer service, public services to our citizens by maintaining our strong sense of identity, managing our growth for generations to come, and making our local economy diverse and resilient. And as I've cited previously to council, in addition to the vision and mission of the strategic plan, we must also follow the core values and guiding principles of the plan. This is important for the more complex and slow-moving realities that we face as community builders. The short-term focus of the Strategic Priorities Chart and the long-term values and guiding principles together provide a good framework to address the opportunities and challenges that we face in Sook today. It also aligns our work with the funding that we have available on an annual basis. And this is the difficult work of council to balance all of this complexity. And as stated before, your administration is thankful for the attention that you paid to balancing all of this. And since the last strategic priorities update, council has approved a new tool for short- and long-range planning. Low-carbon resilience is a lens that combines the economic, environmental, and social co-benefits as we move towards a low-carbon community. Low-carbon resilience is the official definition of the climate-first approach at the District of Sook. And now on to the priorities. The first now priority item is to enhance communication with the community. Based on the corporate communications plan that was developed in December of 2020, several new communication mechanisms have been deployed, including the Sook Spotlight, a quarterly print newsletter, electronic mailing lists, which attract specific audiences on targeted subjects like the OCP review and the multi-use sport box development, a monthly e-newsletter, the picture Sook.ca microsite to support the OCP conversation, and continued enhancements to the website through the current content review and availability of additional content desired by Sook residents, such as the development tracker, the blasting and traffic advisory information pages. Notably, the website enhancements will culminate in a new website, which is currently being undertaken by our communications coordinator and the head of IT. The communications coordinator, a new position with the district in the last quarter of 2020, is tracking related analytics to assist in evaluating and reporting on effectiveness of these approaches. And this data will be available in future annual reports. The second priority item is capital project reporting updates. And I won't spend much time on the capital project reporting updates other than to inform you that at the last monthly meeting following each quarter, council will receive a report from finance on capital projects and quarterly financial information. And the report for the first quarter of 2021 will happen at the May 10th meeting. The third now priority is to improve corporate culture and strive for service excellence. Our work on exploring and improving our organizational culture continues. A culture assessment report video was shared with staff and council. Service area teams have met to review our values and our behaviors, and the Culture Club is compiling this information to support further action. COVID has restricted the pace of this work, as some of this work is best done in a physical setting as opposed to a virtual one. And my hope is that COVID restriction will ease, and in the second half of 2021, we can return to in-person staff meetings to continue this important work. The fourth item on the list is to reestablish the Climate Action Committee. The Climate Action Committee has been reestablished, and as you heard earlier tonight, they are doing excellent work. We will continue to support this work for the remainder of the year. Developing a new, a community economic development strategy is the next now item. The Community Economic Development Officer position has been filled on April 6th. On April 6th, 2021, Sue Wilkie joined the team and has hit the ground running. She's met with the Community Economic Development Committee on April 13th. The next meeting is scheduled for April 23rd. And the next Climate Action Committee meeting is scheduled for April 27th. There will be a CAC planning, our Community Economic Development Planning Meeting on May 7th and a Joint Community Economic Development Committee and Climate Action Committee meeting on May 5th that Mayor Tate will chair. Two joint meetings for these two committees have been mandated by council, one in May and the second in November. The sixth now item is to complete an inventory of secondary suites. To this point, we've compiled a list of legal suites that have, based on who is paying the additional sewer charge. Beyond that, we are dealing with some capacity issues regarding this priority. As council is aware, our planning and development and our operations staff are struggling to keep pace with the number of applications and the application review processes. This includes reviews up to and including final inspections and occupancy approvals. This is in addition to the other priority work, including the OCP review and the capital project planning. We are currently recruiting for the vacant engineering tech position, the new land use tech position and the full-time approving officer. This should provide some capacity to allocate time to this priority and I will report to council the progress at our next quarterly update. The final now item is the John Phillips Memorial Park development. A soft pulse check or community check-in has received 62 responses since being announced through the Suk Spotlight in the February edition. On April 12th, council approved the new parking lot addition, which will be incorporated into the site map and used to operationalize and communicate with council and staff future park enhancements. Park identification signage will be incorporated into the new parking lot as requested by council. Staff have met with the Community Association on the fenced dog park, which will be located within the ponds corridor section of the park. And consultation with neighbors is tentatively scheduled for May 4th to June 4th of this year. The first next priority, which is out until the end of the year, is to be completed before the end of 2021, is to complete a follow-up culture assessment to measure progress from our 2020 assessment. The second culture assessment will be commissioned in the fall of 2021 and be completed before the end of the year. Developing a climate adaptation and mitigation strategy is the second next item. The BC Preliminary Climate Risk Assessment, the Vancouver Island and Coastal Communities Territorial Analysis and Survey of Local Government Priorities for Climate Action Report and the Modernizing BC's Emergency Management Legislation was presented to council on January 11th of this year. As well, the Low Carbon Resilience Framework was adopted on March 22nd. And staff are using the Low Carbon Resilience lens to optimize the recommendations made to council in our reports. Additionally, greenhouse gas reduction targets, policies and actions to achieve those targets are a requirement in the new official community plan. This work is underway through Dialogue and Sustainable Solutions Group and will be workshopped with the OCP Advisory Committee on April 22nd. The Climate Action Committee is also working on adaptation and mitigation strategy recommendations for council's consideration. This priority is in good shape for completion by the end of the year. Post-COVID planning. The COVID-19 Resources and Recovery page on our website is continually updated and strategic news releases amplify provincial news are issued. This includes all grants for programs and programs for businesses and residents and all restart BC information. Provincial updates are also disseminated through the Community Economic Development Committee in addition to the monthly mayoral meetings with the Minister of Municipal Affairs and other ministries as necessary. As well, the BC Economic Development Developers Association has 30-minute webinars with provincial officials whenever a new grant program is offered. After-action reviews with regional and provincial organizations and our internal after-action review have not yet commenced as the pandemic continues. We've been planning for pandemic in our local government emergency planning work for many years and there's lots to learn now that we've gone through a prolonged pandemic. And we will update council on post-COVID work at the next update. The final next item on the strategic priorities chart is the lot development. I can report that the library construction is progressing nicely and there are no issues of note at this time. The Suk Region Communities Health Network is in a holding pattern until a decision is communicated on their BC housing application. The plaza design is in its infancy and is somewhat dependent on the final design on the east half of the lot. But the design elements are being considered based on the Design Sherret Report. And lastly, the southeast quadrant is under preliminary review at this moment. To this point, we have not been tracking the various actions that have been completed on the advocacy issues on the strategic priorities chart. But in the future, we will endeavor to in our quarterly updates, to try and include those actions that have been undertaken by council and administration for these advocacy initiatives. And I'm going to try and switch screens here for the operational strategies. I just want to show council a couple of spreadsheets that we're using to track our work. So let me see if I can redo this. Are you able to see a spreadsheet now on the?
Yeah, the spreadsheet is there unfortunately. No, I can kind of read it now. I just had to find my glasses. It's just the font size is really small for me. But otherwise, it's fine.
Yeah, and it's more just to show you how we're tracking some data, so. The first spreadsheet is our 2021 work plans. So each year after the budget is finalized, directors are instructed to complete their work plans in accordance with the approved budget funding. Each work plan is divided into three sections: capital projects, operational projects and day-to-day tasks. Each project or task has a name, the current milestone achievement and target date, and the anticipated number of hours for that task. The estimated hours allow us for measuring capacity based on our current number of employees within that work group. If we run into capacity issues, we can identify what tasks to defer, extend their milestone date or request additional resources outside of the budget process as Mayor Tate alluded to in the presentation earlier today. The second spreadsheet starts with an analysis of the strategic priority items and goes on to track the completed work. So we will be adding to this for each of the quarterly updates. And then we will be rolling this information into the annual report so that we don't have to scramble to get that information as we roll up to the report. And then just the other piece on this is really sort of data-heavy. So this is our planning and development sheet. So the planning development department has three main areas of work. In the Planning and Development Services, we are tracking the planning applications reviewed, the pre-development meeting applications that have come in and the number of public hearings that have been, that take place each quarter. In the subdivision services, we're tracking subdivision plans approved, new lots created, phase building strata plans registered and phase building strata units registered and the number of new subdivision applications received. And lastly, in the Planning Development Department, the building safety, we're now able to report the residential permits issued, the number of new dwelling units approved, the average number of days to issue a residential permit, other permits issued and total permits issued, as well as total inspections completed. And we've expanded this a little bit to also track the percentage of inspections that have failed and the percentage of partial inspections that we've gone out to site and the builder is not ready for inspection, so we can't complete the inspection. And those things are important because every time that we go and we're out to a failed inspection or to a partial inspection, it means we have to go back to that same location sometime in the future and do more inspections. So we're watching these failed inspections and partial inspections because we do see them going up a little bit. And it does have an impact on our staffing levels and the amount of work that the fellows can do. So I'm going to now go back to my original spreadsheet, hopefully, just to finish up my presentation. So are we back to the slide deck?
Yes, that's fine. Thank you.
Excellent. And so with that, I would like to thank our directors and staff for their focus and commitment to these priorities and our council reporting process. I look forward to meeting with council in July for our next quarterly update. And with that, I will recommend that the community of the whole accept this report for information and be happy to answer any questions that you may have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr McInnes, for the very thorough update and particularly the work that you're doing on the spreadsheets. I didn't need to read all the fonts, but just to see the level of detail and the work you're doing there is very welcomed and I'm just, yeah, very grateful for that. Now that we have, with the changes administratively in corporate services, I have spoken with our staff just on what support is looking like for the mayor's office, for example, and I did raise the advocacy item as one that this is important matters for us here. And then just some sort of way of tracking it and I had shared something briefly that the CRD had provided, but just so that we can sort of track responses. So if we're receiving follow-up to communication, you know, and I kind of loosely keep it together in my notes, but it just helps sometimes with knowing where a thing is at, what sort of a response. Is it the response we wanted? What does the next step look like and so forth? So these sort of things really help and I appreciate you mentioning that. And particularly in the realm of policing and the cost pressures with our population and so forth. It's really important that we're aware of what's happening with advocacy. I'm sort of thinking of the Ecom and those costs, for example. So thank you very much. And I also appreciate, just so we know where, you shared with us some capacity constraints, the hiring that we're looking for. It may be a bit challenging with some of the restrictions that are in place and even the affordability or lack of affordability for someone looking to move into this area in particular, it's tough. So, but getting those updates, I think it just allows us to, we understand where you're at, is what I'm saying, or I understand because you shared it as opposed to not saying anything and then we wonder what's going on. And then we all ask tons of questions. So this way, at least we know. And there's an explanation and, okay, there's, I know we expect you to work magic, but we also know that you're well-grounded in reality and what is achievable. So thank you very much for what you're sharing tonight. So hand this over, council. Questions for Mr McInnes? I'll go to councillor Beddoes, then La Genesse, then St Pierre, please.
Not so much a question, I just want to thank him for that very short presentation, first of all. But the second part of it is getting.
You're on mute, councillor Beddoes.
No, I'm not.
Nope.
Everybody else can hear me, can they?
I can't. No, I can't hear.
Okay, can you hear me now? Everybody else can hear me. I can't hear you, Mayor. Okay, anyways, I just want to, one thing that really perked my interest there, a lot did actually, but I like how you're tracking the building permits and because a lot of stuff is going on in Suk and that was always a bone of contention, people not getting answers in a timely manner. And it looks like you've tackled that head-on and you've got a way to track it and I think that's a really good move forward. So that's, congratulations on that. So, yeah, it was a good report and it was well worth staying around for, so thank you for that.
Your worship, if I could, just one comment on that. One of the things, we're tracking fees and revenue as well, so. Council's been very gracious and I think it's a great model that we have our non-market growth we sort of set aside to grow our staff complement. But there is another piece to that as well. So with building and permit applications, sometimes we get a little bit behind, but the revenue is there to bring on additional help. So, you know, when we're struggling because the amount of applications are high, there's also additional revenue that's probably beyond what we budgeted for. So we could use that as a possible funding tool if I do come to council with a request for additional resources.
That's great. Thank you very much for that, Mr McInnes. Councillor La Genesse, you're up next.
Yeah, I just want to thank Mr McInnes and all of the staff for putting this together. I think when you have so many different projects and things going on, it's impossible to keep track unless you develop tools like this. And I think in the past, just from listening to complaints from members of the public in the building community, that things did fall off the table fairly regularly. And I'm looking forward to see how this works out as far as keeping track of everything and not letting anything fall by the wayside. So thanks, thanks everybody for all the work you put in.
Councillor St Pierre?
I'll just add my appreciation and move the motion for the acceptance of the report.
Okay, that's been moved. Anything further from members of council? Councillor Bateman?
Yeah, I'll just say ditto. Thank you, Mr McInnes. This is, yeah, great work.
Yeah, and I'll just share that I always think that staff have always worked really hard at what they're doing. I think it's just the case that we've grown significantly, we're bringing in new services. It's a changing community, a lot of expectation, a lot of demand, and what's happening here is that you're bringing it all together. And that's the important piece now. And then with the spreadsheets, there's just some tracking, there's more accountability and everyone is sort of knows who's doing what. So I'm hoping that this all helps everyone in the district. You know, sometimes it's just, okay, I'm doing this, now you're doing this, now we're both doing the same thing. And that happens, I'm using that example from my previous organization. So there's just more togetherness occurring here, which is challenging in the current state of affairs. It's pandemic aside, Suk is just really busy right now and there's a lot going on. There's everything now, including the pandemic, to manage. So, yeah, thank you to you and everyone in the district. Okay, so on that note, I'm going to call the question. All those in favor? And none opposed. Thank you. I'm just noticing technology-wise, there's this button on my headphones that mutes my headphone and I forget about it. And that's why, you know, everyone seems to hear and I can't, so it's a user fail.
Maybe you should hit it more often.
Oh, probably a good idea. Okay, so that brings us to the end of our meeting tonight. And so I thank everyone for being with us tonight. Take good care, everyone. These recommendations will flow to upcoming council meetings. So until then, just take good care, all of you. And on that. all of you. And on that, I'll call for a motion to adjourn, please. Moved by councillor La Genesse. Stay safe. All those in favor? And good night. We are adjourned. Thank you, everyone.